Good morning, everyone. We'll call the December 10th meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners to order if you'll please stand and join me for our invocation and our pledge. Heavenly Father, as we enter into this Christmas season, please help us to be ever mindful of the true meaning of Christmas and give thanks for all that you have bestowed on us in his name. Please be with us and all who work alongside us for the betterment of Berry County and, you know, support our continued efforts to make this a great place to live. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, our chairman continues to enjoy some wonderful weather in Hawaii, so you're stuck with me again. Nice to see everybody here. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Carlton.
Present.
Campbell.
Present.
Doster.
Present.
Getty.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Smoker.
Here.
Tunisin.
Here.
Jackson is absent.
All right. Reports from state and county officials. Any state or county officials like to make a report at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to limited public comment. Anyone that wishes to address the commission may do so for up to three minutes. Welcome back, sir. We missed you last week.
Thank you very much. With more urban township, I wish to remind members and guests, please speak into the microphone or use your outdoor voice. Also, I've been told by many people those terms, when they try to watch what's going on on the internet or computer, the volume is nonexistent or delayed by a few seconds, which can be frustrating because there's a fascinating amount of knowledge that is shared in these meetings that people can't hear or understand. And so I'm speaking for them as I say, please, speak into your microphone or use your outdoor voice. Also, I don't know if I said with urban township, but I've lived on a gravel road for forty-five years or so. I pick up litter every other day. And it's frustrating that after I clean my section of the gravel road, somebody throws out a big old bag of miscellaneous stuff. And if you're throwing out big plastic bags of deer guts, please drop the organic stuff along the side of the road, but take that ugly plastic bag home with you because when I pick that up and the guts fall out, it's an extremely messy thing. And you don't want to be around when I say all those naughty words. So please do not dispose of your deer guts alongside my road because it's important to me that every time I drive down my little road, I want all the neighbors to see that it's nice and clean. And to see litter when garbage cans are out there during the day, that's frustrating. The trash can's right there. Throw your litter in the trash can, please. But as I always say, and I'm full of these little mantras, try to be a good person every day of the week, not just on Sunday mornings and Wednesday night at church. Creator is watching out for all of us all the time, and she knows what she's doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Other public comment. Bill, welcome.
Thank you. Bill Matson-Hastings, before the end of the year, I wanted to take the time to thank Commissioner Doster for his service to the county. I served with Mark on the Community Mental Health Board, and while some of his comments might be frustrating sometimes for people, he brings up points that are legitimate items that we should think about. And we've appreciated you on that board, Mark, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mark, you've been called out.
Guys don't know anything about the frustrating comments.
No, but we too appreciate the service you've provided, so, yeah. Other public comment.
Where are you based, Carl, the township?
Sorry, I've been absent.
And we've missed you.
I bet you have. First off, I'd like to thank the board for Resolution 24-27. That's the resolution to back the lawsuit that's going on against MPSC. It's a step in the right direction. I would like to see us to put a mechanism in place that we can stay on top of these issues as a county administration so we are able to join in the lawsuits and whatnot that occur. Like I said, this is a step in the right direction, but it's kind of, the cow was halfway out the barn when we got involved. Also, we got a couple of bills that may be coming up, SB 299, SB 300, that involves septic inspections mandatory by the state. There's two possibilities it can happen. It could be on a ten-year cyclical basis. The scary part is it looks like they're going to implement TOAST on a statewide basis. So what I would appreciate if everybody sitting here would contact their local legislatures and also their Senator Albert and let them know precisely how they feel about this and request that they vote appropriately on it. This is a major issue that could have devastating impacts to us. Did you guys know I was involved for a number of years in getting the TOAST regulation repealed? And that alone, for the seven years it was in place, cost the residents of Berry, the rural residents of Berry County, over $3 million, you know, paying for fees for the inspections and the so-called mandatory repairs that were on there. So I would appreciate it if you all connect the reps and very strongly suggest they vote against these two bills if they come up. It was of 10/23, they were still in committee, but it sounds like they're moving forward. Another scary part of is that the Senate is going to be in session through January 23rd. The House will be in session through, January 23rd, excuse me, thank you, John, for catching that, December 23rd. And the House will be in session through December 19th. The slam duck session, anything can happen. Last I checked, there was 300 bills that were introduced in the House or the Senate since November 11th. So that aspect is a little scary, too. So, thank you very much. Oh, and I have not dumped deer guts on your property for at least five years because I stopped deer hunting.
Thank you, Larry.
Can't leave that alone.
You want to talk about deer guts, too?
If you pick them up. Actually, there was quite a bit going on here that you guys need to be aware of, the lame duck. They wanted to do mandatory vaccines, then national popular votes. That's not a good idea. That'll, I hate to put it this way, that'll screw us over at the local level for a long, long time. We do that. And then they want to do driver's license for illegals, non-gender license acts, I'm not sure what that is. They want to legalize sodomy. Sounds like another IRS. Sorry. At least 20-year criminals. And that's huge, okay, for us. And double malpractice insurance, Hollywood film credits, mandatory park pass. In other words, you go get your license plates, you have to do a mandatory park pass even though you don't, whether or not you use the parks. Let's see, double the marriage license fees, six additional weeks to unemployment insurance, $500 license to sell nicotine, middle-class free housing, and free water for cities. That's, I asked our state reps that we have if this is all legit, and they said, oh, yeah, and there's a plethora of more coming. So just stay vigilant on this. I'm on top of it. I make these phone calls and like the one he was talking about with the septic systems. They're talking every five years, $1,000 fee, inspection fee. And if you break that down, that's a $200 tax a year, and we're trying to get stuff done here. So I've been using that approach, that every time you guys do something like that, we have a harder time getting anything done that we want done locally here. So, you know, good luck getting a millage when they got another $200 a year from the state. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dar. Lame duck sessions are truly frightening. Other public comment. All right, moving on. Approval of the written agenda, including consent items and items for discussion. Have a motion to accept the agenda? Moved. Is there support? Moved and supported to approve the written agenda as distributed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or the same. Various correspondents, there is none. Consent items, Commissioner Doster.
Thank you. Mr. Acting Chair, I would move for the adoption of the following consent items. A, approval of the November 26, 2024 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. B, approval to submit the attached 2025 grant narrative slash application to the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, LA. Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation for the Berry County Substance Abuse Task Force to conduct education, communication, and outreach regarding the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act in Berry County. C, approval of Public Act 116 application, farmland and open space preservation, number 24-6 for Shane Hickey, located in Section 24 of Castleton Township. D, approval of budget amendment 24 slash dash C. E, approval to enter into the 2025 grant agreement with the State of Michigan, LA, for the continuation of the remuneration program in Berry County and to authorize the grant administrator to sign the grant application, an agreement, on behalf of Berry County. An approval of the attached agreement with Ander Wild LLC for remuneration grant administration services. And F, approval of the audit engagement agreement with Gaybridge &amp; Company to perform the 2024 Berry County Road Commission Annual Audit. I so move.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Jackson's absent.
Consent items are approved. Well, one of the nicest things about having our chairman out of town is that I get to do some service awards today. So I'm going to move to the other microphone. And hope that it works reasonably well, otherwise I will continue to speak loudly, Rick. So I'd like for our honorees to come forward, along with the department heads. First one is Julie Campbell, who is administrative assistant in planning and zoning.
Good morning again. Great, 10 years.
Yes.
And you're getting him out to get rid of him.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. But you know that's going to put a great burden on you to keep things running smoothly. So Jim, anything you'd like to say to Julie?
Sure. Well, Julie's been a great addition to our program, and it took her 30 years to get to 10 years. So the way she went, she was with the county for a long time when I first got here, and then she left us for a bit, and then she came back. So it's been a non-continuous 10 years.
Yes.
But she's doing a great job for us, and I know she'll help Jeff make a smooth transition into the position, and we love to have her in the planning department.
Great. We look forward to that. So Julie, the certificate reads, Berry County Board of Commissioners hereby commends you on 10 years of dedicated public service given to the people of Berry County, Michigan, presented on this, the 10th day of December, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything that you do for us.
Appreciate that.
And I can personally attest to that, being on the planning commission, I have a chance to, she keeps us all in line, so.
I try.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, thank you. And I'm going to apologize, but I will probably not get this name correct, but Daisy Cherniewski?
It's Chernowski.
Chernowski, okay.
She's on her way.
Pardon?
She's on her way.
She's on her way, okay. I'll get a second chance to try and get that right. Karyat Essner, from the front of the court.
We don't know who she's from.
Okay.
Rebecca Hawkins.
Well, okay, but I've got Eric Godby to first. So Eric, from Central Dispatch, he's a supervisor there, and we're also celebrating 10 years of service with Eric. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And I know, I'm sure you have.
Well, I could say a million words about Eric, and it wouldn't be enough. He also works for the sheriff's office on the Marine Division, so his service to Berry County is all of the time. He's been with us for 10 years. He's a supervisor. He brings a calm, gentle demeanor and a wealth of knowledge and calmness, especially to our new hires. So for me, Eric is irreplaceable, and we're glad that he continues to make Berry County his home and where he works. So, thank you, Eric.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And Eric, thank you for your service in both areas.
Thanks.
So we have a similar certificate for you, recognizing your 10 years of service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She gets our seniority award, 15 years of dedicated service. So, you know, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And would you like to tell us a little bit more about how much she contributes to your department?
Oh, my goodness. We, I don't know where we would be without her. She not only works at the front of the court, but she also spends her time helping with collections at the court. She is an extreme asset to our organization, dealing with very difficult, challenging clients and helping navigate those complexities in a very diplomatic way. So we certainly appreciate all of the contributions she makes and all the legal research she offers. She takes a look at all those federal mandates and memorandums that we get from the state and dummies it down for us so that we can make sure we're compliant. So thank you for 15 years. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Thank you.
And Rebecca, similar certificate for you, recognizing 15 years of dedicated public service.
Can't believe it's 15. Time flies really quick. Exactly.
I was going to say, does it seem like more, or does it seem like less?
It's amazing. Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So Wesley James from IT, as she separates herself from all of our equipment back there, but Wesley is responsible for working with some extraordinarily antiquated equipment, trying her very best to keep us online and so that all can hear us. Hopefully, we'll have some new equipment at some point, not too far down the road. But we thank you for all you do, and five years of dedicated service, and we look forward to the next five.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Morgan Hubbell from the Sheriff's Department. Okay. And last, Alexander Wilf, also from Central Dispatch. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I assume you're going to tell us a little bit more about everything that Alex does for us.
So Alex also continues to serve Berry County through the Marine Division, the Berry County Sheriff's Office. So he also does that. He makes Berry County his home and his place of work. We're incredibly grateful to have him. Alex's intelligence are off the charts, even though he's going to deny it. He's definitely irreplaceable on our team. In a world full of perfectionists, he's definitely the best call-taker that we have at 911. So thank you so much, Alex, for what you do for everybody, day in and day out. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. We know that's an extraordinarily challenging job, and to hear something like that about the manner in which you handle it is truly exemplary.
Thank you.
And you get to run around on boats occasionally, which is also a lot of fun. So Alex.
Yeah.
Certificate for your five years of service, and we look forward to having you stay with us for another five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Fun to do, great to see, yeah, that kind of talent stay with us for, you know, that period of time, so. And we all understand that you have other things to do, so we wish you well as you get back to work. All right, public hearings, we have none today, so we'll move on to items for consideration. Commissioner Smoker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $4,686,307.68.
Support. A motion and support to approve prepaid invoices in the amount of $4,686,307.68. Discussion, and we'll have roll call.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Jackson's absent.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of claims in the amount of $84,933.77.
Support. We have a motion and support for the approval of claims in the amount of $84,933.77. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Also approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a commissioner's reimbursement mileage in the amount of $213.73.
Support. We have a motion and support to approve commissioner reimbursements for mileage in the amount of $213.73. Discussion? Roll call.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Resolution 24-27, Resolution to support local control and claim of appeal against Michigan Public Service Commission Order, supporting a lawsuit filed by a group of municipalities to oppose state preemption of local zoning ordinances in the sightings of utility scale, solar, wind, and energy storage facilities.
Support.
We have a motion and support for the adoption of Resolution 24-27, Resolution to support local control and claim of appeal against the Michigan Public Service Commission Order, supporting a lawsuit filed by a group of municipalities to oppose state preemption of local zoning ordinances in the sighting of utility scale, solar, wind, and energy storage facilities. Roll call, please.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Move for approval to accept the resignation of Craig Stoltenberg as the Village of Middleville appointee to the Berry County Materials Management Planning Committee and to appoint Tracy Gillespie trustee for the Village of Middleville as the elected official of a city or village representative on the Berry County Materials Management Planning Committee for the term beginning 12/1 of 2024 and ending 11/30/2029.
We have a motion and support, and I would just, you know, remind everyone that we approved the membership of this group a couple of meetings ago. The state, in reorganizing solid waste management, created this entity and was very specific about the makeup of the board. So Craig filled that particular seat, and Tracy will be able to qualify to meet the criteria of that position going forward. So we have a motion to accept the resignation of Craig Stoltenberg as the Village of Middleville appointee to the Berry County Materials Management Planning Committee and to appoint Tracy Gillespie trustee for the Village of Middleville as the elected official of a city or village representative on the Berry County Materials Management Planning Committee, otherwise known as MMPC, for the term beginning December 1st, 2024, and ending November 30th, 2029. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Doster.
Didn't we already accept his resignation from this board once? Or is that, was that a different board, or haven't we already acted on this?
Brownfield.
What was the Brownfield? It was the Brownfield, okay. So it was two different boards at ease? Yes.
Yes, sir. This was necessitated because we didn't, we did not have a village representative to the MMPC, an elected official, which is required by the regulations. Craig, they allowed Craig to fill that role. As soon as we had an elected official that expressed interest, Craig offered to step down and allow us to stay in compliance with the regulations. But yes, Brownfield is why I think we did that one of my first meetings.
Okay.
Other discussion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to let the commission know, we have three interviews that will be moving forward for the emergency coordinator position, emergency management coordinator position. We're setting those up right now. I had one accept the interview already, so I'll be reaching out to the group that will be interviewing them. Laurel and I are going through the HR manager applications as well, so hopefully we'll know more on that front soon. Besides that, and we will have one more budget amendment for you next week, as we discussed. So if there's anything else you'd like to see us tackle, let me know.
How many applicants did you get for the HR positions?
Kind of, there's two answers to that question. We had about seven, I think, hard copied, seven or eight, and then I had several through LinkedIn, which I'm reaching out to them here today. But I also didn't, LinkedIn didn't let me post the whole job description, so I'm concerned. They apply when they see the salary and when they see some of the other things, they're going to be like, thanks, but I'll pass, because there was some very good experience that came in through LinkedIn. Probably total 13.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Chair Person's report, I'm sure he sends this hello, and hopefully he's applying sunscreen. Vice Chair's report, I, yesterday, attended the annual meeting for Michigan Works. I passed out their annual report, thought each of you might want to take a look at it. I think it's safe to say that we have one of the, probably the best Michigan Works entities in the state with our regional group. They have been very active and creative in some of the programming that they have developed. They've actually made presentations to similar groups in over 13 states trying to replicate some of the programming that we do. So, it's a great, great group, and it's been interesting to be involved. You may notice that I was chair of that group over the past year. It was a hard-fought campaign, but they rotate that between the seven counties on an alphabetical order basis, so. I have served my term and will be replaced as of the first of the year, but great organization. Otherwise, yeah, was at the West Michigan Regional Planning meeting last week and Hastings City Council meeting last night, so been a busy last five days. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Tunisin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Attended Carlton last night. I'd like to thank Chris Manell, our co-compliance officer, who came out and introduced himself and was quite active with the board. I really appreciate the fact that he did that, just like last week when Bruce mentioned that. I'll have Hastings Charter tonight and Rutland tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Acting Chair. I did go to Syria last week. Tonight I have Baltimore, and tomorrow night I have Johnstown Township. And for those who were interested in the Health Department meeting, it has been moved from the 20th to the 13th. So, be a good opportunity to come over and talk about that septic tank issue, that meeting.
Is that in Hastings?
That'll be in Sherlot, and it'll be on the 13th this Friday.
It's gonna be across the road from where the courthouse is.
Okay, I'll cancel my golf line.
We appreciate you making that sacrifice.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smelker.
I attended Thornapple last night, and they promoted two people, two lieutenant in emergency services, and I attended Freeport, and that's it.
I attended Thornapple last night as well, and again, really nice to see them grow their emergency services department and promote from within. They also accepted a scope of work to amend their zoning ordinances, so they're going through a comprehensive zoning amendment process based on their master plan update from a couple of years ago. They bought a new ambulance, so they've got lots going on. Also, I wanna give a shout-out to Dan Patton and Berry County Parks. They received, as we heard, the AARP grant to do the accessibility, improve accessibility to the buildings. He also was awarded the Van Delsen grant for that project, so that $50,000 project was fully funded through grants. And he wrote a grant to the Berry Community Foundation for a Trax chair, which is all-terrain wheelchair motorized, and was awarded about two-thirds of the funding for that project, so he's seeking other grants to make up that $8,000 that he still needs to buy that. But those kinds of chairs really open up the outdoors to people who don't, can't get there on their own, so it's pretty amazing, and I think Dan's doing an amazing job of really seeking out those grants and being awarded.
Thank you.
Mike? This week I've attended, or the last week I should say, Maple Grove, Castleton Township, Village of Woodland, tonight Woodland Township, Nashville will be Thursday, where I'll get excited in Nashville for the Christmas parade coming up. This Saturday at 6:00 PM, leaving from the VFW, I've been getting my float ready, which is basically my Jeep with antler ears and this little tail that came with the kit. And I have seven elves that have volunteered to march with me. They all get elf hats and such, and three of them are my grandchildren, so I'm very excited about this.
Excellent. Mark?
At our last mental health board meeting, we had a discussion on whether it might be more appropriate or an idea that the interviews for positions for mental health come before the Personnel Committee first instead of this board due to the sensitive nature of the applicants. You know, they have to fill certain positions on that board, whether they are users of the system, et cetera, and that it might help encourage more people to apply our last position that we filled. We only had one applicant, and I always think that that's kind of a shame. I mean, not that that wasn't an excellent applicant, but that there should be a choice. And so we had a discussion regarding that, and I think it was the consensus that maybe that that would be something that should be looked at.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you. Limited public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please step to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Making up for lost time. Touching a little bit on what Don mentioned earlier, on the National Popular Vote Compact, that's Bill, House Bill 4440. And I think everybody here, especially our elected officials, should study the implications of this bill if it passes. That's Bill 44440, and once again, I'd appreciate it all if you would contact your state reps and senators and voice your opinions on this. I've already talked to Albert, he's totally against it. I have not talked to our three reps from the county. But if this passes, my fear, looking down the road, was that Jim Brown used to say from 10,000 feet up, I think eventually there's gonna be a move on getting rid of the Senate also, because they're gonna try to move this to a strictly popular vote on everything, totally disregarding some of the tenants of our constitution that have been in place for quite some time. Thank you very much.
Had a chance to talk to several of them yesterday at the Michigan Works meeting, so, and fortunately, they seem to be very supportive of our opposition to that, so.
No, it's all been, I've done one part of this push, and I don't think I have to elaborate on that.
Right.
At all, so.
Yes.
Good morning, Rick Moore, Riving Township. I've been blessed to be able to come to these meetings since 2005. I was here when the first toast agreement was being voted on. The director at the time said, "It is not our intention to make people currently come up to current values and current things." And so the board voted on this. And then he got up and said, "It is not our intention, it is our purpose to make people come up to code." At that time, and I still live in a pre-Civil War farmhouse, that is not up to code. I had a one-inch well, which was not up to code. Well, I have corrected the well problem. In order to correct the house problem, I'd have to do like my next-door neighbors did, which is burn the house down and build a new one. I can't afford to do that. The name of my farm is Poor Richard's Farm. I can't afford to do that. The guy next door is very wealthy and a wonderful neighbor. He could afford to buy 100 acres next door, and he's just a wonderful young man, who every time I'm working in the yard, he stops by and offers to help. And I keep telling him, "Ed, thank you very much, but I'm only 74, we'll be in less than a month, and someday I will be old and really need your help, so thank you for offering" and that kind of stuff. But I just want to let people be warned, with this toast agreement, if they inspected the property before the sales, I wouldn't have a problem with it, because you want to buy a place that doesn't have a problem. But if they're continuously inspecting your property over and over again, when you've owned that property for 45-plus years, it gets extremely frustrating, and then you have a problem with, you know, inspectors wanting to inspect over and over again and charge you for it, and it's kind of frustrating. When you have the most beautiful apartments in Hastings, and they seem to want to get you out of the business by threatening you and saying, "Do it our way, or we will put you out of the business." And thinking, I'm a fourth-generation Hastings businessperson, this is my town, I love my county, let's all work together to continue it to make it the most beautiful county in Michigan, and the most productive board in Michigan. And I really appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I didn't want to throw myself in the middle of another conflict or anything, but, you know, I just have to put it out there sometimes. So, thank you for your support, and thanks for putting the clock up there where it's easier to see, and thanks for all the wonderful things you do, including the things we don't know that you do. Thanks again, Rick Moore. I support this message.
Thank you, Rick. Other public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move on, and there's no other business. Commissioner comments. Mark?
Yesterday, I watched a number of the events going on in Syria with these, you know, these prisons with all these people being released, tens of thousands that were there, a lot of them basically just for expressing their right to speak and not having any charges ever brought against them and being dropped in a hole for decades on end, and it made me think just how lucky, I think maybe we kind of forget just how blessed we are to have the freedoms that we do and the ability to disagree and to speak your mind without severe repercussions, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Excellent reminder. Mike? Catherine? John?
I just want to agree with Mark, but I also want to say that I do believe there's people out there that would like to take that right away from us, and we have to watch it.
Bob?
I want to take a minute, Larry mentioned Jim Brown's name, supervisor at Hastings Charter. He's been there for 20-some years. I can't tell you exactly how many years, but his service to Berry County and to the township is immensely appreciated. His health is not the best right now, and I want to reach out to him and wish him the best, but I want to thank him for all the years that he gave back to Berry County, so I'm good.
Thank you, and an appropriate reminder of everything that Jim has done for us, yeah. Bruce?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Doster, for those comments. I think we all sometimes think Thanksgiving is the day for thanks, and it is, but we all should be thankful for the other 363 days for what we have here in the United States. I did want to mention that this is Dalton's hometown Christmas week, and Saturday they do have a great parade, 6 o'clock, a lot of lights and dress-ups and everything, and I will be dragging around the Man in Red at the end of the parade. And I used to do it with two horses, and now I do it with 400 with my truck, so. If you get a chance, come on down.
Thank you. I was wondering if we were gonna hear about Dalton's Christmas activities. Hastings had a great weekend just passed, and a nice turnout for all of the activities there. The mayor is still trying to get the green paint off of his skin since he saw fit to dress up as the mayor of... Yeah, whatever it was, he, yeah, trying to be Grinch-like, but it was a great weekend. Would also remind you that we, I think in your boxes you all received the reminder that next Monday there is a potluck honoring Jim McManus, 30 years of great service, so please stop in and wish him, wish him well. And I would also remind you that next Tuesday, there is a swearing-in ceremony immediately preceding our meeting at 8:30. This is an honorary event. Our newly-elected officials still do not take office until January 1, but this is a chance to welcome them on board, so if you can attend, we'd love to see you. Otherwise, I have nothing else for the good of the order. Look forward to seeing you all next week. Anything else? All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Support, Doster. We have the support. I think we almost all lost interest, so I'm glad to see that at least the two of you are with me. We are adjourned. Thank you all.